If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then stand for a moment of silence for our firefighters. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, a moment of silence dedicated to the firefighters who have died while serving our community were dedicated their lives protecting the safety of all of us. So we have tremendous fire district here in the village and surrounding the village. And I thank them very much for everything that they do. Just a few announcements today on the conference call with the county. It was brought up about the possibility of having outdoor seating for the local restaurants. And it was just talk, I think it has to come down from Albany, but the county is working on county exec, Steve Newhouse is working with other county executives to see if that could be more or less a local action. Okay, so we'll keep everyone posted on that. It could be good news coming down, you know, coming down the pike. I'm working very closely with with the school district regarding the seniors graduation. Hi Rich. And I spoke to Principal Connolly, I believe it was Friday, and we're looking at possibility of a parade throughout the village, starting at Little Britton and then coming through the village into Blooming Grove, back to the high school where diplomas will be given out. That's still in the infant stages. I believe we have a call tomorrow to discuss it further. Whenever I get off the phone with him, I'll put notes together to send them out to everyone. Really, our, we did receive a, a Orange County sales tax check last week. It was in the amount of $2,000, 245,924.50. That was representing the first quarter. Now, the first quarter is the month of December, January and February. So the pandemic did not affect that, but the pandemic is definitely going to affect the second quarter, which is March, April and May. We might have to send them a stamp so they could put it on the letter to tell us we're not getting anything. So there's a lot of things up in the air with that too. But right now we are scheduled to lose anywhere between 30 and 60% of our sales tax revenue, which could be 400,000 to 600,000. Means a lot to the village. That's it for the announcements, other than the new business Memorial Day Parade. Think we should be canceling that or postponing it later on in the, in the summer, maybe early fall. I think Paul, you and I discussed, I brought up the Veterans Day Parade and you said, well, that's November. The Christmas Parade is December, so you have to come up with some type of date for, for this to take place, but we'll never be able to organize the parade. Actually, the events committee will never be able to organize the parade in limited time. Assuming that Governor Cuomo comes through on May 15th and starts to relax some of the social distance, social distancing, which brings me to over the weekend. It's a beautiful weekend, you see a lot of families out walking around and I did notice a lot of social distance, you know, distancing, a lot of masks being worn by people. I know the police department received a phone call from one of our ward reps saying that there were a lot of people close together at Memorial Park. The police department responded, spoke to the people and problem was solved. I emailed you the wastewater treatment plant presentation under 3B. I don't know if you got a chance to look at it. Of course, does anybody have any questions on what I just said?
So far?
So far.
Yeah, I think the Memorial Day Parade, I mean, once it's passed, it's passed. It is, this is unprecedented times and I mean, a lot of things have been postponed, canceled or postponed. And you just, you can't redo St. Patrick's Day in September. You can't redo Memorial Day in December, you know, it just, it's an unusual year. It's gone, it's gone. We just, we skipped it here.
Okay.
Does the events committee know or have you had a discussion with them as to what?
They did have a, I did have a conversation, short with Rebecca.
Okay.
And I just don't think it could happen. You know, even if May 15th, we've given the okay to do it, May 25th. And I don't think they're just gonna hold on to and wait for us. I know 4th of July is another issue that that's coming. If I spoke on that, I don't know how far, did you have that conversation Val?
Val, oh, you muted yourself Val, you gotta unmute yourself when you got up. There you go.
I thought I was watching one of those movies.
Let me try that again. I'm supposed to set up a meeting between myself and Rebecca and Anthony from July 4th fireworks and see if we can just come up with a backup plan, God forbid. And that would be a rain date, which they usually don't do. But we're gonna discuss that with him and this is all pending what Cuomo's next decision is. Nobody knows, so.
Right.
You also had down, didn't you have down on air about the century carnival?
Yeah, they postponed that themselves. So they're looking for a date, they wanted to do it the same day as July 4th.
Okay.
You know, so yeah, very crowded that day.
Very crowded.
Oh, no offense. I mean, it's something we'd obviously like to talk about, but just in advance, usually the fireworks are let off. Well, you saw what it was like last year, they're measuring a certain perimeter away from people. And I mean, I can only imagine with all that equipment there, that would not be allowed.
Yeah, I think on, the concept's beautiful, but maybe
What is?
They could push that to Labor Day or you don't have it at all, but that is their way of fundraising.
No, I totally, yeah, I understand.
You know, but like Paul said, unprecedented times, we have to do what we have to do, unfortunately.
And I would not want Knights of Columbus to lose out on that, that's a, a lot with that.
Any, anybody else before we move on or Rich, anything?
Oh, he's mute.
You gotta unmute.
He pulled a valve.
Don't go in the left hand corner.
You got it.
All right, you're good. Okay, I sent you a chart from regarding the wastewater plant. We are about 96% complete down there. Hopefully we could be completed by the end of this month. A couple of things had come up back in 2017. The village bonded $13.2 million for this plant. As of today, we would be at, after the construction of the project, $11,489,000. Now, there was some change orders. If you look on the bottom of the piece of paper I sent you, the G, that's the general contracting contract. And you'll see the delays, the three delays where I said, under negotiation in all three items. These were the delays that were enforced on us by the DEC because a SWIP report was not completed by our engineering company. So those three items, which they are going to be negotiated, but it's also going to be, be negotiated that the village is not responsible for this.
Right.
The village did everything it needed to do. The engineering company did not do what they needed to do. The dry well, another 18,000, that came from the result of the SWIP report. If you look, new fence, it was never addressed. So we have to decide, do we want it, the fence to go around the whole property? Okay, or do we want it just to go around from the wastewater plant and the DPW? So it's just one, one block right there. I think, I don't think we should have separate entrances or, or like it is now down there. It is just one big village property and I, I would like to see it stay that way, but that's up to you. Capola, who's our general contractor, is seeking three prices. We could seek our own price, however, it might not be paid by environmental facility corporation. Okay, unless they are a MWBE contractor. So we also have the tank repair, that's the old trickling filter, that's that round portion that you see up on the hill. And that being said, in my walkthrough the other day, that area is complete. They moved the fence back to the railroad, the rail trail. Okay, and they put stairs there. The problem is, it's not our property. Okay, so I will be having a meeting with Capola as well as H2M, our engineers. They need to come up with a different solution at their cost, not the village's cost. All right, we paid engineers to be there to foresee the job every day. So if they didn't catch this, shame on them. There's other items too that, that, that we will be arguing about before this thing is over. So right now we're about 750,000 under budget. I think by the time this all comes to fruition, we'll be about 900,000 under budget. Okay, so we'll have to go to the residents for the bonding. How do we pay back that bonding? We had some original thoughts earlier, so we, we need to just schedule meetings. I lost everyone.
Yeah.
We're here. We're here.
If you look at page two, the transformer, the E contract is the electrical contractor. Transformer that blew up now functioned because it was undersized.
And whose fault is that?
H2M.
Okay.
Engineers. The DO probe, I don't know what, what DO stands for, but they only needed, they needed two, but they only specked out one. Temporary alarm has never been addressed, neither has the SCADA system. The SCADA system is everything talking to each other. It was never addressed. We have some prices, I'm not happy with the prices. So we'll have to negotiate with the various companies that submitted their pricing. Again, it should have been called out in the drawings. We spent a lot of money on drawings, as you could see.
Yeah.
Now, what we did, they must have took out, previous administration might have taken, must have taken out a short term ban for the design and construction, the design plans from H2M. That was paid off in this bond that we are now facing with EFC. Okay, so we paid off the ban, but just carried the money over to the bond. So when I said to Munistat, the financial group, I said, well, we paid off the ban, which was good, no, you just moved it over to a, a bond from EFC. So, but all in all, even though we were behind schedule, we're certainly not over with the dollars, which is more important to us right now. Any questions on that?
No.
Okay. I don't know when the grand opening would be with that, but we still have our final, well, final walkthrough, obviously, but a final punch list item that I'm collecting some items. Capola is, Olympic Electric is, contractors under the P is King's Capital, doing a great, great job. And H is the HVAC, SNL Construction. Okay, Dog Park Progress. Really, this is for trustee Ladato as well as myself. You could start Val on, on that.
I'm in the process, I actually have been playing phone tag with the guy from Orange Nursery who came in lowest. Joe and I have been speaking about plants to put in between, I guess you would say, the water runoff and the fencing for the dog park. Just as a nice, you know, blockage. What else? If you've been down there, the guys are doing an amazing job. They put up the post and rail, everything looks beautiful. I don't know if I'm allowed to jump the gun and say there's gonna be bocce courts. That probably should have been Joe's thing, but.
No, it's fine.
I also ordered these, I'm so excited they're here for when people put in their applications. Yay, so each year will be a different color, obviously with the year on it. But all need to fill out an application in order to get the dog tag. Village residents, we are fortunate, it will be no charge, but it, there is a $75 fee for anyone outside of Washingtonville for the dog tags. And it's about, that will go on the website.
Yes, Village of Washingtonville.
Yes, and so about four pages for the forms for the dog park, explaining everything with the rules. We have a sign, I don't believe it's ready yet, but I believe it started with the park rules that will go on the bathroom building, I don't know what you call that. Isn't that where it's going on the side of the building?
It's gonna be on columns, on posts, right where the picnic area is on the other side of the bocce ball courts.
Okay, so to the right, okay.
I did talk to Dave from Slutnik Signs and he'll have it ready by Friday.
Okay, wow, that was quick.
Pick it up, I think it's a two by three sign. He said it should fit in the car, so I'll take a ride up there on, on Friday. Hopefully to pick it up. The bocce ball courts, like Val said, came in, Paul and I were down there. Really by accident, I think, last week and we, Paul says, why don't we put bocce ball here? We were going to put it on the grass off Aherne, which would interfere really with, with our parking for the events. Talking with Rich, a bocce ball court is 91 feet in length if we're running tournaments. Paul, I think we said 86 feet or 76 feet?
76 feet is the.
Is club, right?
Yeah.
Really, we were able to do the 76 feet without having to bring in a lot of fill. So we won't be holding tournaments, but I'm sure there's gonna be a line of people waiting to play bocce. But like Val said, the dog park looks beautiful. The walkway is in place, the lights are replaced, all with the exception of one light post at the very end, which they do have, they found one down at the waterworks. It just doesn't have a top on it, so we have to order a top. But then I was told, you know, after three weeks of saying, we need to take down the library ones to move them and so forth. Well, no, we have one, anyway. We, we have the light fixture, we're just looking for the top. But it's a beautiful, it's gonna be a beautiful park.
Oh, it's really nice.
And the, the dogs are very excited, they line up and they look at us. They throw out a little bark, but they're pretty happy. But like Val said, the, the forums will be online by the end of this week. And we could have them put out online. We're looking for the vaccination papers for the dogs to make sure that all the dogs are, are vaccinated. And do we want to put a limit as far as how many people could be there at one time?
I believe on the rules it says eight.
What's that?
Eight dogs, so I mean, I don't know how you want to characterize people. Like if Larisa and I each had, well, I believe it's a limit, two dogs per person, so, you know.
Okay.
Probably eight dogs. Never mind the people, I don't know.
All right, well, it's a big dog and a little dog, so. Anyway, hopefully that's completed and open by the end of this month. That's what we're, we're striving for. Any questions on that?
It looks good, I did see it, it looks really nice, they're doing a great job.
The insurance for Jacks. Now, this is life insurance, Paul, you want to discuss this?
Well, I want to discuss it, sure. I mean, I had asked Chief DeCaro today about it was, it's an 8,000, you know, we paid $8,000 for the dog and it's, the insurance policy was $8,000. He responded with an email again from Marshall and Sterling. Because I, my question was, is it $8,000 for the life of the dog? Or do they depreciate them because it's an item, dog, but it's an item? And they do, in fact, it does, in fact, go down after the first year to fair market value. I, I was gonna contact Brian again and ask him, who determines what, what's fair market value of a dog? I mean, you could maybe determine fair market value of a car, but I don't know how you determine fair market value of a dog. So if we paid 560 a year, in four years, we pay about four grand and a fair market value is four grand. You know, to use an old point and old phrase, it's a wash, you know?
It's a push.
Or push.
Yeah.
I always confuse wash and push.
Push, yeah.
I, I don't, you know, and he doesn't, and he doesn't, he doesn't know, the, the insurance company doesn't know, but they assume that the value can be increased each year. But of course, if you increase the value each year, your, your rates are gonna go up. You're gonna be paying more. So that's what I, that was my question to Brian and they do, it does in fact decrease in value.
All right, well, the dog went back to school today, they opened up the school.
It started again today?
It started again. So hopefully, and whatever, I think they.
He wasn't homeschooling?
Uh, he was in the beginning, yes. And then the dog says, no, I, I'm not doing this.
He got sick of the laptop.
He did. I did send you something today, did you like that, what I sent with the dog?
I loved it.
Loved it, right?
I wanna know. Do that.
What's that?
I wanna know why my dog doesn't do that.
I thought it was, I thought it was funny, it just.
Smart dog.
It was a long day, as you could just imagine. All right, so I guess we, we need more information on, on that.
I think you got what you, what you got. With that response this afternoon to my question, you got what you got, you know? It's $8,000 the first year and after that, what's the fair market value the second year?
Right.
I don't know, maybe the fair market value the second year of a dog that's been on patrol for a year is $6,000. Who knows? I, I just think it's throwing money away. You know, it's nice to have, I mean, I have pet insurance and that started out at $400, it's gonna go up each year. It goes up each year as the dog gets older, even though they tell you, oh, it's not because the dog is getting older, but it is because the dog is getting older, just like everything else. So it's, you know, it's up to you, if you wanna put it up, put it up.
Any, any discussions on this?
I think I just, more information on it, I'm, I'm really not understanding, I mean, I understand what it's for. I mean, there's no insurance or anything from the company in which the dog is.
Don't, don't think of it as life insurance. Again, it's, it's an object, don't think of it as life insurance. Like insurance on your car, your car depreciates.
Okay.
And that's what, that's what they're doing here, they're gonna give you fair market value of. And when, you know, so when you say insurance, it's not really, you know, you're insuring something, but it, it depreciates in value. And it could depreciate quickly, we don't, who knows? And who, my question, again to Brian, is gonna be, who determines fair market value? How do you determine fair market value of a dog?
Right.
I, I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, since it's new, let's say, let's, let's use a car as an example. Since it's new, why don't we pay for one year? We're not locked in after a year, then you have your full market value back. And then we can discuss it after we have more information for next year. Like Paul said, what's the depreciation, depreciation gonna be? So if Paul says, maybe it's six, maybe it's four next year, then we discuss it and we maybe don't get the insurance. But for the first year, God forbid, something would have happened, $560 to cover 8,000, sounds like a fair bet to me.
But didn't, didn't somebody say, maybe Paul said it in an email, isn't their coverage through the village policy?
No, that's a liability.
Oh, okay.
That's a liability into it.
Okay.
I mean, what does everybody else think?
I don't know, I don't, I don't know that we're not locked into it.
Yeah, it's a good point, Rich. I'm wondering if Marshall and Sterling is the insurance company that we should be talking to about this.
Correct.
You know, so maybe we need to get some prices, I agree. And, and don't forget, the letter that was written, was written to District Attorney Hoovler. The county was paying for the dog. The county was going to reimburse us the $8,000. Is that still on the table? Who knows? Okay, because again, that was prior to COVID. So, but I, I think I would be okay with the life insurance. I don't know if Marshall and Sterling is the company that we need to go to. So if, if you want to, we can put this off until the regular meeting, which is two weeks from now. You know, just to see. And maybe we'll find that, no, Marshall and Sterling is the only company because they insure us in, in the village.
Yeah. I think it's good to get more quotes, I mean, it's just a.
Or just more understanding, I, I, Paul, great points. I mean, who's coming up with depreciation? There's aisles on the dog.
Because, because we treat dogs like our family, I mean, rightfully so, but they're really, they're not people.
And like you said, who determines it?
Yeah.
Which brings up what Rich said, but I, I'm agreeing with Rich also. Let's just get other prices and see next year how much the dog depreciated. Not gonna depreciate with, with us, because I'm sure we're going to appreciate everything that the dog is doing.
Yeah, I, I would think since it is, as Paul says, an object and it depreciates versus a life insurance, it's gotta be year to year, it can't be a locked five year contract, then it would be life insurance.
I, I wish he would have provided it with a, a copy of the policy.
That's why we're going, you know.
I didn't see the policy, I just saw
Numbers.
Let it notes from Marshall and Sterling's wife. But I didn't see, I, you know, you see a copy of the policy, you go look at the policy, just like you would do with any other policy.
All right, so I'll ask the chief to call Marshall and Sterling, or I could call Marshall and Sterling and get the policy for the dog. Email it to me and I'll email it to everyone else. Rich, I'm sorry, I didn't put it on the the work session agenda that I sent you, but Val, but Louisa did add it, you had a question on the update. Police staff moving over to the village hall.
Yes, have we had any more thoughts or discussions on it?
Yeah, there it is there. Really, we don't know where we stand sales tax wise. Okay, that will, will get us jump started into doing the work. All right. Our next sales tax will probably, what's this, May, will come in June. And like I said, we'll probably have to provide the county with the stamp to send it to us. But first things first, everyone has the drawings, I know I had to, I had to do some, some corrections. Rich, Rich pointed out something upstairs. Do we go out for competitive bidding? Which is, which is fine, it's not gonna cost us anything, other than printing of the. Which is, which is fine, it's not going to cost us anything, other than printing of the, the drawings. I, I did the construction drawings, just see what numbers come in at? Well, are we going to use our workforce, which is being stretched out right now, to be honest with you? You know, I, I think we have, we, we came into this year with a lot of hope to pave more streets. Perhaps that paving is still, still could happen, I, I don't know. Really, I, I don't think we're in the, I think everyone's in the same situation, we don't know. All right, and I hate to be in a situation where I don't know.
How much, weren't we, how much do we, or do we figure to get from the sale, because that's what we're going to use?
That's what we were going to use, but who's going to buy it right now?
Yeah. Good point.
All right, so anybody else want to bring something up that's not on the agenda? Okay, Village Hall continues to, to work on a rotating schedule. I try to make sure that we don't have that many people here, but they're coming in anyway. Okay, so during the day, I know Louisa wanted to come in during the day, and I said, hold on, I think that would be a lot of people. But things are working, I'm, I'm real happy with, with what's going on in Village, I think we all should be. Right, it's, it's a token to all of us. Anybody else?
Um, I had the, my last item on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, Val, yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Ladato.
Yes.
Beautification, within the next week, I'll be posting online, just asking any volunteers, I'm sure there's people out there dying to get out of the house. And a social distancing way to do, to put up ribbons and flags at Fireman's Memorial Park in honor of Memorial Day. I'm sure everybody has seen, or I hope they have seen on the community events page, they are organizing, you know, I believe red light bulbs and red, white, and blue, that I believe they are selling through Nailed It, and that's on their Facebook page. And we're just trying to add to that by doing what we did last year with the ribbons around the trees and the flags throughout the park. And I'm also to that Orange Nursery order with the plants for the dog park, ordering plants for beautification, a plant like we usually do at Veterans Memorial across from Betty's, and again, at the Memorial Park. So I, I'll post this online, I'll coordinate with the beautification committee. It might just be a series of dates, because it's a lot of work, we don't expect it, and I think a lot of us have time now, so.
Yeah, unless the 15th, they say, okay, everybody could go out now, have fun.
Right.
Walk closely to each other and have dinner with people you never met.
Yeah.
You know, no, Val, I think that's, they're busy too. I mean, the nurseries that I contacted, pretty much the same nurseries that you did.
Guy that I've been in contact with, well, all of them, they've been very great with getting back to me, but the, the lowest bidder, I feel so bad, it gets back to me at like midnight. You know, they're working a lot, which is good, that means people are outdoors and, you know.
Well, people aren't showing up to work.
Maybe, yeah.
Owners have to be there.
True.
No, Val, I think that's, they're busy too.
What is that?
I don't know, backfeed.
I don't see jokes.
It was, it was my voice 10 minutes ago.
It was.
One of the, getting back to
Weird.
The wastewater plant, negotiations with, with Capola, there's like $25,000 in landscaping that I'd like to take away from them and give to us. So I don't know if everyone's in favor of that. And what's it going to cost us, but I first have to make the phone call to Albany and EFC, you know, because we could take the $25,000 and span it over 30 years, as opposed to paying $10,000 in next week's payroll. You follow me?
Yeah.
So that's what I really have to talk to them about. So anybody have any other questions? If we could, I, I just have one other thing, but I, I have it in my office, if I could just excuse myself.
Can we play the Jeopardy music?
It's, it's, I'll be right back.
Okay. Good, we could talk about it now, I'm.
I hear you.
You can hear.
I can't believe how cold it is today.
I know, what happened?
It was 80, it was almost 80 degrees yesterday.
Okay, I'm back.
He's back.
This is from Rick Holmes, dated May 1st. They, they will be filing phase four of the subdivision map in Goshen shortly. The requirement of filing is having the village planning board chairperson sign the subdivision plans. That would be Anna Lee as the chairperson. The attached plans of the subdivision plans must be signed. They have been approved by both the village engineer and the Orange County Department of Health, which I have the paperwork right here. And have the health department stamp on it, included are two paper copies and one Mylar. After signature, we could pick up the plans and bring them to the county clerk. I don't think it's going to be that easy to walk into that building. Please note the tax map numbers of the parcels of the plans were updated in handwriting and to the current tax ID numbers according to the county clerk instructions. Included in this sub, submission also find a copy of the approved letter for Realty Subdivision from the Orange County Health Department dated March 5th, 2020. Concurrently, we are finalizing the letter of credit with village attorney Will Frank. Our bank will forward the line of credit to you. The wording is finalized. Thank you for your assistance, please let me know if you have any questions. I will reach out to, to John Petrazini, see if he's happy with it. I'm sure he's going to say yes, because this letter says he said yes. And then reach out to Will Frank, and then call, call Anna Lee to come in to sign the subdivision plan, so they could be filed. Anything else? No?
That's everything.
Sure, Paul, good, Rich?
Good. Good.
Val, Louisa? This is such an Hollywood squares. And I think I have the characters too.
So what square am I in? Because I'm at the top of mine.
No, you're in the, the bottom left, actually the center. You're the last person, the last square for the tic-tac-toe thing, you never go the, over left in the middle.
darker.
Okay, motion to adjourn, and how, how are we going to work the next meeting? Just play it by ear, it might be on another Zoom.
We have to wait, we have to wait.
Wait, but it's May 19th, by the 15th, we should know.
Okay.
I'll, I'll set it up again for the Zoom and then the live feed as well with, with Jefferson.
Thank you, Jefferson.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Yes, all right, so that's, that's the 19th.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we don't have, hopefully, we could be in person. I'm sure we'll be busy that night, okay? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Do it by a wink. Okay.
All right.
Be well, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Paul, okay, all right, okay.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, Paul, okay.
John boy.
Okay, okay, one other thing, okay.
All right, I'll see y'all later.
Bye.
Bye.
I'm trying to figure out how to get out of here, we go.
On the bottom right, exit meeting.
I got it.
Perfect.
Leave meeting.
Wait, I'll end it all.